Appreciate you being here for our city council meeting for April 11, 2023. We will have an opening ceremony, which alleges by council member Will Thompson.
All rise. Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we are so grateful for the opportunity of being here tonight in this city council meeting. We ask for thy Spirit to be here, the things to be discussed with our great city here, that we can use the wisdom as we're incorporated, and that we ask for thy inspiration as new. We're thankful for the opportunity of serving our country and serving our city, and help us that we be cognizant of our residents and constituents and our decisions that we make. We ask for thy protective hand throughout this night, in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, which is our consent items. Item A is approval of the meeting minutes for March 14, 2023. If you all have a chance to look at those minutes, any corrections or questions? Now, if I have a motion?
I motion that we approve the meeting minutes for March 14, 2023, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, I'll attend.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries, thank you so much. Item number four, our business items. Item A is an annual Easter egg hunt report. I think Maren Burrows, would you go ahead and say it, if I'm not in? You can introduce yourself more than that, if you want.
Yes, I'm Maren Burrows, I go to Weber High, and I'm part of the city council. And I'm going to talk about the Easter egg hunt, but there's a few other things that I'm going to go.
You go ahead.
Yeah, so, as part of the city council, we did have with the Easter egg hunt, it went really well. There was a lot of people that turned up. We also went to a Lincoln luncheon dinner, that was a lunch, with some state representatives, and that was, it went really well. And for some future activities, we're planning to volunteer at this Save Kids Day, which is a community activity in April. And we're going to go on a field trip to the Weaver sewage treatment plant sometime this summer. Another thing I was going to talk to you guys about is the city flag, where Harrisville's going to need a flag. And so we're going to have a community contest where people can submit entries, and we'll go through them, and we'll pick who wants. We're going to start entries in June and end it last day in July. We want to start advertising in May to get the word out so people can know. And then we want to go through them in August and narrow it down, and then our hope is to unveil it at the fall festival. And that's what I've got. And one other thing is we've been growing, we are now up to about thirteen members, so.
Wonderful.
That's all I've got for you guys.
Thank you. Thank you for all your help. Elizabeth, thank you for their help on the Easter egg hunt, in conjunction with Brian, and it was wonderful. I love you, we're all aware of how big the success that was, but it was a great day, thank you. And congratulations on growing that program. Item B, discussion possible action to purchase a new Public Works trailer by Justin Shinson.
Councilman, as many of you guys know, we've had some discussions about purchasing a new trailer that will be at the size for our Mini-X, so that we can help our city by self-performing a lot of these repairs that we're doing with the storm rate system that have had some looks like. As you can see, it's a really nice trailer. The nice thing about these trailers is if you're a regular citizen to go buy that trailer, it's almost $40,000. Due to state contract, it's down to twenty-eight, thirty, twenty-nine thousand, and you can see on the invoice without any tax. It has some special features as far as the hydraulic ramp, so my guys don't have to sit there and fill those heavy ramps and hurt themselves, and then we have a workman's comp claim or something like that. It's just, it's really needed so we can holler out the Mini-X and all the attachments, so we can help our citizens and, you know, any issue with storm water or sewer or flooding, all of the above, so.
So if we tried to move that piece of equipment with any of our other trailers, would we be breaking the law?
Yes, we would. Yeah, that Mini-X weighs a little bit more than what any other trailer we have is rated for.
When are you able to get this trailer?
I could, as soon as the check's ready to go, I can go pick it up.
Where's the money coming from?
From the sewer fund. We have, we've had a little excess of sewer fund money addition, but still, it's, you know, it's there in the budget for this year to be used, but because of our procurement policy, and hopefully the $20,000, $25,000 loan that I need to bring to you, yes.
So is there possibly, there's a possibility of a need right now, is it?
Yes.
Of flooding, that we need to get this? Any more questions for?
It's a new toy, that's what I say.
Okay.
The toys go on. Yeah.
All right, if not, no more discussion, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we take a trip to the purchase of the new Public Works trailer.
I'll say it.
Do you need an amount on there?
It's in the memo.
Okay. So just that one that's referred to in the memo, is that?
That's fine.
Okay. All right, our motion and a second, roll call is needed. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Willmson?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Got your trailer. Item C, discussion possible action to approve annual subscription with higher ground for Live 911. Chief Wilson.
We've already talked about this in how the demonstration, we're just asking permission to sign the agreement and start this as of July 1st, so my goal would be to start the training and updating the server at the county in June, so already on July 1st.
Any more questions for Chief Wilson? If not, we have a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to approve annual subscription with higher ground for Live 911, agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, this is also a roll call vote. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Willmson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Item D, discussion or possible action to adopt Resolution 23-04, which is a resolution to authorize interlocal cooperation agreements between Harrisville City and Weber County relating to ramp funding. Director Fife.
So we have some exciting news that you may or may not be aware of, that we were chosen by Weber County to be funded the ramp grant funds for the new playground, so that's exciting. I think this is just a formality really, that we need to enter into the local agreement with Weber County that will share that cost with them. We did receive the packet of information from them with the contract in it, we need to decide to give back to them, and then probably copy this in a local agreement too, but basically it says we're going to hold up our rent and pay for the other half of it, and they'll pay for half of it, and we'll get it ordered as soon as we have this to move forward with.
Any questions for Brian?
I had one, I just saw it when I was reading through there, that I guess you got two bids, Lucky Dog and Big T?
Yes.
So which one are you looking at going?
Lucky Dog, which was a little bit more, but the reason for that was we, they're a little more local, which then they're, that's well for them, the points, as far as why they would choose those. And they questioned that as well, and that was the answer for them.
Any other questions?
When would this get installed?
I will order it tomorrow, and probably a couple of months out, I would guess.
And that's going in the main park?
The main park, way out at the basketball court, concrete, east side of the existing playground that's already there, not by the battery.
What's our part and what's theirs?
For cost, so they're giving us $42,000, $452,000, we had a $10,000 donation, and then our part will be about $32,000, which was already approved in January.
We're excited for this, I think we've waited a long time.
It's been a long time coming.
Any other questions?
Do we have a ribbon, do we have a ribbon cutting ceremony when it's in?
We certainly can.
I think we should.
Absolutely.
That's if we approve, that's if we approve.
I don't think you're... Going to get out of here without that. All right, anything else, council? I need a motion, please.
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution 23-04, authorizing cooperation agreement between Harrisville City and Weber County relating to the ramp funding.
I'll say it.
Motion and a second, I also need a roll call on this. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Willmson?
Yes.
Thank you. Got your playground too. I'm excited about that, we've had a lot of questions about that over the last few years. All right, item number E, or I guess I leave, sales and franchise tax revenue law discussion. I'm trying to sort of, Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor, evening, council. We are going to begin our, we have a couple of updates to give you tonight, but we'd like to, I'd like to invite Director Shinson up to give some very good news that we received in the last week.
As you guys all know, we've been working very hard at Public Works to get this new building going, without knowing exactly how we were going to fund all of it. A grant came, federal earmark funding came across Mayor and Mayor's and Jevy's desk, and they worked very diligently on getting letters of support from other agencies. As you guys passed that agreement last week, I just heard also, I heard the last month, I just heard in the last week from Representative Blake Moore's office, that we would grant about $3.3 million in funding. So they will cover the complete roadway construction and infrastructure from Highway 89 to 750 West with that $3.3 million grant, earmarked funding. So we are super excited that there allows us to move forward with not just the Public Works, but the entirety of the complex and not be in a deficit. Again, we're cautiously optimistic that sometime mid-June, we'll have a groundbreaking ceremony for the Public Works building and that roadway. We invited Representative Moore out with that, and we'll make sure that all of you council members and mayors are aware of when we'll have that. I'll have gold shovels and everything ready for you to go, so we can have a great groundbreaking ceremony. We'll probably have a few news media outlets, I know Standard Examiner, I'm reaching out to KSL, and probably Fox and Channel 2, and possibly Channel 4, so. Again, great news, saves us $3.3 million. And again, hopefully this is just the very tip of the iceberg, to keep working together with my staff, Glenn. Gamma was very intricate in this, with helping me get this grant, and done in a very timely manner. I mean, we put it together within two weeks, and to make the deadline, so. It was incredible work, but it was so satisfying to find out that we did get that $3.3 million. So it's just got to go through the budget process, signed up by the House and the legislature, and then it'll go across the President's desk, and funds will be available in December, so, of 2024, so.
Thank you, so we just wanted to report that money is now available, and I know last month during our discussion, we weren't sure, and weren't confident that the remaining $9 million we have in our sales tax revenue that was outlined in our parameters resolution last year would be enough. But with this $3.3 million, I feel confident that we can phase the project appropriately to be fiscally responsible with the $9 million. We also have some other opportunities with getting started on the project that we can reapply for more funding, earmarked funding in the future. And we as staff are committed to doing that as we move through this process to save the city in any avenue or way that we can. So having said that, we've invited Marcus, our bond advisor, who you're familiar with. He has a few updates for us tonight, and he can answer any questions that we will have regarding the issuance of the remaining bonds.
Perfect. Well, it's nice to see everybody again. As Jenny mentioned, there's a few updates I'd like to discuss. So, just so everyone is aware, so I've currently joined another firm, municipal advisor firm, broker dealer, here in Salt Lake City, so it's no longer Marcus Keller Designs Public Finance, it's Marcus Keller Cruising Associates. They gave me an opportunity to be a managing director and open up a new finance firm here in Salt Lake City, so it was just an opportunity that I couldn't pass up for, as we talked to my family, and did all that fun stuff that comes with those big changes in life. So that was one thing I wanted to discuss with the city council, I talked to Jenny just briefly about that, to see if there's any concerns, any questions about that. I sent her over some additional language pertaining to an updated contract. We were able to reduce our fees, as a sign of goodwill moving forward with the city, but obviously if there's any questions, concerns from the city council, I'd be happy to answer those, to make sure that, obviously, this is all out in the open and address any of those issues upfront. So, is, happy to do that right now, any thoughts, concerns? Well, that makes you feel really good.
I think he's being very modest, because if, back to Marcus's more, I don't know that you all are aware when we went through our geo-bond experience, he was very, very helpful getting, walking us through that process. And as the results came in on that, he actually waved his feet for the city personally, for us, because of the, and that went at a great effort for him. He put forth a lot of effort to help us through that process, so that's a credit to who he is, and I'm very confident he'll do this in the future. He actually provided some preliminary numbers to us last month, and they've actually dropped.
Yeah, so I do have some handouts here, and as you move into a different firm, a few of the things that you don't think about as a stapler, so I apologize, I had a chance. So some of these are loose down, but I've gotten them organized here, so. Hopefully, if I have a scar. I might have to have them shared here with you guys, that's okay. Okay, perfect, and then I do have a coverage table I just wanted to go over as well, here, I should have enough. So, yes, that is at the top of my list, is to get the stapler or paper clips, so. Appreciate you all bearing with me here. So, just as an update here, so the nice thing is that, well, I guess as you all have seen in the news recently, there's been a lot of upheaval in the financial sector, and so that, you know, has been kind of a double-edged sword. Rates have kind of started to go down, the Fed's hopefully going to start pulling back on their fiscal policy, which, you know, they've currently started increasing, or have been increasing rates over the last couple of years to combat inflation. Now, market sentiment means that, you know, we're hoping to start seeing rates slowly move down, but as the market works, they're preemptive, they're forward-looking, so they already priced that in to these current rates. And so thankfully, as I reached out to your purchaser that did such a good job on the prior bonds, and gotten information from him, he was able today, actually, to give me some even better rates by about five basis points. So our effective rate would be approximately a 4.24, but that's over 24 years, or sorry, 25 years, whereas the prior bond was a 20-year bond. And the nice thing about this is, I've talked to Jenny about it, is it's a direct purchase, so we don't have to go to the market, we don't have to get a rating, we can close these as quickly as you would like, and I would actually suggest quicker is better, just because we can't lock in rates until we have an official closing date. And so I preemptively told him that we'd be looking at the end of April, beginning of May, but I wanted to get your direction on how quickly we wanted to do that. He's familiar with the credit, so we can bypass a lot of that stuff, which is nice as well. And we can just move forward to get these funds sent over to your escrow account. Zion's Corporate Trust would still be your trustee on the bond, so they administer to the escrow account, and be available to start spending by the end of this month or beginning of next month, or as soon as you would like for me to get that scheduled and ready to go. So, everything's looking good. If you look at this second page, I handed to you, this is our bond coverage sheet, so this is that single page I sent over. Again, we have to be sensitive that we don't run out of coverage for two reasons. One, obviously you're legally bound, that you can't issue additional bonds that's going to bring you below one and a half times coverage, so if you look at that far left column, it'll show you what your coverage is, which is basically all of your debt service for that year, and that revenue, which is your sales tax and franchise tax divided by that debt service, and that's how you get into your coverage ratio. In this case, you're looking really good. In most years, we're projecting over two times coverage still, and that's just using a conservative estimate that your sales tax is going to stay flat and not grow, which, you know, there may be some ups and downs, but historically we've seen rise in sales tax for most cities. And so, this just gives you a good idea that you are still healthy. We want to make sure, as I've told Jenny many times, that we're focused on this, sales tax revenue, franchise tax revenue really is the lifeblood of a city, and so we want to just be sensitive to that. But with what we're showing, I think the city will continue to be in a good spot. And I know you guys had to make a lot of hard decisions over the past year or so, and so I just credit you all for keeping a very healthy, financially stable city, and kind of doing the tough stuff that nobody wants to do. So, good job to the city council for getting beat up. And so, that's my report, any questions on anything I've mentioned? Love to get some direction, if you have a date in mind, we can go ahead and get this scheduled, we can lock in rates to avoid any volatility, and off to the races, so.
Is there any reason to wait?
So, that's going to depend on a couple of factors, I think. The first one being, it really depends on what you're waiting for. If you're waiting for because you don't know how much money you're necessarily going to need, if you're debating, well, we don't know if we're going to need $7 million, or $8 million, or $9 million, then there could be maybe a potential pause that takes place. But the nice thing is these bonds are callable anytime, unlike what we would get in the market. So if for some reason you finish your project and you've got a million or two million left, you know, Bank of Utah would allow you to pay off downsides of those bonds without penalty. So that would be one big benefit, but if it's, the one thing that always makes me nervous, and I run into this, this isn't the first time I've been asked that question, is should we wait to see if we can get a lower interest rate? I think people that got a mortgage two years ago would say, better not do that. It's just, it's hard to tell, nobody knows, I don't even think the Fed knows. And I say that kind of jokingly, because they're causing all of this, but at the same time, it's, in reality, these are going to be callable anytime for both series, not only this one, but the prior one. So let's say we issue these bonds, and even in two years, three years from now, let's say markets just plummet, then I'm sure Jenny will be giving a call for me, like, hey, let's bundle both of these up together, take them to the market, and/or potentially renegotiate and get a lower interest rate. That would 100% be your option to do that.
So what you're saying is we can basically refinance, like you would all?
Exactly, without penalty. Most, just so you know, and this is unique about this purchaser, Bank of Utah, who bought your prior bonds, his are callable anytime. Most muni purchasers at least require a five-year call protection on their deals. And so, we're seeing that more and more frequently now, and if we go to the market, they would actually require up to a 10-year call protection, just because the way that it works is usually these get put into portfolios, and they just don't want to have to fiddle around with it, you know, for the next day, or next year type of thing, so. So you're in a good spot, so I think, you know, hopefully rates do drop in two years, I get to say, hey, we're going to save you a bunch of money. So that would be great, but if rates go up, then you can say, glad we didn't wait.
And what did you say the rate is right now, 4. what?
4.23. That's the, we call it the true interest cost, because if you look at the first page of that sheet, you'll notice that it's actually multiple rates up and down the yield curve. But the blended cost or the true interest cost, you can see there at the bottom, and that's the TIC number that we use. So it's kind of in small writing, but that is what most market professionals will say. If somebody asks, what interest rate did I get, kind of compiling all that together, they would say the TIC or true interest cost is 4.23.
So kind of what this looks like for our plan moving forward is with the 3.3 earmarked funding, helping put the road and the infrastructure in from Highway 89 to 750 West, we're confident that through the bonding and other impact views that we have available, we'll be able to complete the public works facility. And we would like to begin the process now, knowing and having the experience of going through the process with the public works building, we'd like to get started on the city hall and the police department buildings, so that by the early January of 2024, we can apply for earmarked funding again. They do like projects that are combined, so Northview Fire's participation potentially with our public safety would help us increase our chances of getting more funding. And we will, we have some fairly good numbers to move forward with the city hall and the public safety building to know what we can and can't do. And we'll front it all on that new city street, 1750, we'll front, the whole complex is there. So whether we put in other future roads around it can be future-based. We feel confident we can make this one with what we have here.
I guess I just want you to explain just a little bit more.
Yeah.
I know we did this once, but I haven't reviewed it for a while. So we, we work with you, and you go to Zion's, and then Bank of Utah, how does that work, right? So are there all three involved?
Absolutely, that's a great question. So we act, or I've acted in the capacity of your municipal advisor. So by law, we can't be a municipal advisor and a purchaser, because there'd be a conflict of interest on the transaction. I'd say, hey, I'm going to have my bank buy your bonds, because they're the best rate in town, and, you know, you're like, well, we trust this guy, because these are, you know, they're obviously a very severe conflict in that. So in this case, as municipal advisor, prior, was at Zion's, now at Cruising Associates, still doing municipal advisory work, what we do is we reach out to multiple purchasers that would be interested in this. So the one reason that we've reached out to Bank of Utah, so he's on the purchaser's side, so his, I guess, his wants aren't the same as your wants, right? So as the purchaser, he's probably, I would like to have a 10% rate, you know, or something, but obviously, we know what appropriate rates are, and that's why he wouldn't do something like that. He wants future business, as you deal with the 22 bonds. And so, yeah, so the roles are municipal advisor, which helps the city sell the bonds, the purchaser, underwriter, who would be the one to buy the bonds, or if it's an underwriter in a public transaction where we go get a rating, they would actually buy the bonds and then resell them to investors or whomever they would want to at that point. And so that's kind of the different roles, and then there's bond counsel, who's Brandon Johnson at Farnsworth &amp; Johnson, and he prepares all the legal documents and gives the opinion that they're tax-incent bonds. So, and then, without going into the, we have your trustee who administers the bonds and sends out agreements, and that's actually a separate function, it's actually a different group at Zion's Bank, who's Zion's Corporate Trust, and so we still work with, obviously, all those other different groups as well. So there would be no issue on that front with them.
That's why I want to clarify for me.
Yeah, great, great question. So, yeah, just to give you a little insight, one reason why we're, instead of bidding this out, going to Bank of Utah, probably more information than you want. this out, going to Bank of Utah, probably more information than you want is, Bank of Utah did a really, really good job on the 22 bonds. I, you know, I remember, they actually, I was on vacation that day, and I got a call from him, because this was kind of when all the rates started going haywire. I don't know if you guys remember, this was last year, though. And he called and said, hey, rates are going nuts. And I looked at my phone, I was like, oh my gosh, you're right. I said, can we lock in today? And he said, absolutely, I just need you to send me an email. So I reached out to Ginny and booked her the rest of the day, we got everything ready, and that's how we were able to get such a good interest rate. I don't remember off the top of my head, I forgot to grab those numbers, but it was, if we would have waited, it would have been 20 to 30 basis points higher. So, and so, in this case, they're still giving us a great rate. We're already comparing this, we're not just giving them the deal by any means, but with the terms and the rates and everything, and they're, again, they're an Ogden-based bank located here in Ogden, they're very hungry for Weaver County-type transactions, so.
Any more questions or discussion? Only have Marcus here, thank you for coming up.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I have one question.
Yes, sir.
You know, we're talking about the second part of this bond, right? The nine million?
Okay.
Okay. All right, the first, is the first bond callable for rates two?
Yes.
So we can lower those rates too? As you had mentioned, if we needed to.
So, yes, this will be a separate bond, so it'll almost be like having two different loans, but they're both callable anytime, so they both have the same redemption provisions, so that if you ever wanted to refund one or the other, or both of them, you could do so without penalty, or you could pay, if you had additional money, obviously, I would probably suggest you pay off your higher interest bond first, but you could even send a payment to your lower interest bond now and pay off without penalty as well. So, correct?
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Ginny? Thank you, Marcus. Great discussion, appreciate the valuable information you brought up.
Glad to help, thank you all, it's great to see you.
So you're wanting to know where?
So we just want to head nod that we, that everyone's in agreement.
We can get it all done tomorrow, that sounds great.
We already adopted the Crown Earth Resolution, and as we discussed last month, that expires in May, and then we would have to start the process again. At this point, we have enough information, I feel confident recommending that we issue these nine million. We will begin the RFP process to put out the same process we went through for the public works facility, to hire an architect, start the drawings, start assessing our needs, our current needs, that we're due at all, and then we'll start moving forward, which has been, here we are, almost a year later with the public works facility, and we're just a matter of weeks away from breaking ground, but it's all been behind the scenes, all the work, right? We meet twice a month with our architect, and we're going tomorrow night for preliminary site planning, we'll go through the planning commission for the public works building to give you an update on where we're at in that process.
So this is not necessarily a formal vote, or even just guess, we have your support, we're on the right track?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, there you go, thank you.
Do we have a date in mind? Is there just as soon as makes sense type situation?
Yes.
Perfect, I'll get it going.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Safe travels. All right, moving on. Thank you for all your questions and discussion, I'm pretty excited about all this. Item number five is a public comments, and this is for anyone in the public who would like to approach and, uh, council, come up to the podium, you have three minutes to address your concerns. And I think I'll close the public comments, period. Moving on to item number six, this is mayor council follow-up. First of all, I'm going to go with the department heads. Chief Wilson, do you have a report for us?
Yeah. Considering our...
Yeah, we're formed here.
Our new detective for next year, the plans are to move Sergeant Davis back into investigations, look for a new sergeant within, and then hire an officer. So we're kind of in the process of taking applications for sergeant, then go through the testing process there. Alicia was great in investigation before, so I think that her and Detective Keller will work well together. So, that's kind of exciting. We're also looking to start a drone program after the conversation with Live 911, kind of starting looking into that. I see the benefits of maybe entering the realm of drones now, so when things progress with the county and they can start sending the drones with the Live 911, that we'll be ready to participate with that. So my hopes would be maybe when we get our new building, if it's a fire department and a police department, we could house the drone right on top of the roof. Those are the kind of places the counties are looking for, so that's kind of my goal with that. I think the drones are a huge help, and we probably should have started earlier. And then, our officers association is almost complete, we're just waiting for the articles to come back from the state, and we can get our number and start doing fundraisers and stuff with that, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Director Byd, sorry, I started.
Yeah, so, I just finished up the boys' basketball, which went great, so it was a nice report, but we have a sport going with no major issues, so that was good. Just wrapped up the Easter egg hunt, and Elizabeth and I are already looking forward to next year, hoping to make some more improvements. So, appreciate her help, and I was very surprised at the number of U-City council that was there. There were, there were a lot of kids, and they were all willing to do whatever they were told to do, so that was very much appreciated. We'll just look this month to turn the secondary water on and prepare ball fields, get ready for baseball and softball, and just wrapped up the registration for that, and numbers look good, they're up a little bit, so. It's going good, that's all we've got. Well, and splash pad, there we'll...
Do you want, just, let's address that right now.
Okay. So, staff just would like to know what your thoughts are on what you want to do with the timeframes, dates to open, times of day, and maybe the season, just to give you an idea of what we've normally done in the past is Memorial Day through Labor Day. And that's typical since it began. Another thought of that might be June 1st through August 31st, and that's simply just because we don't have to pay staff to be on-call for those two holidays, it gets staff out of working those two holidays. We don't see a huge influx of people that hit it right off the bat. They usually, you know, wait till school's out, or whatever. So that's another, that's a thought. Times, we usually start 10:00 AM and run until 8:00 PM, that's what we've done since the splash pad was put in in 21, 2021, we ran from 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM. 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM would be an idea that I would throw out there, and that eliminates the need for evening on-call staff, just by eliminating that six o'clock hour and the seven o'clock hour, because I'm there for ballgames during the evening. I don't see a lot of attendance there at the splash pad during those two last hours, but by closing at six, we wouldn't have to have somebody come in from six to eight on those on-call hours, so it would save money on staff. 12:00 AM, or 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM was also a thought that staff threw out, we could do that. So the other, the change to the typical schedule would also, if we closed earlier than 8:00 PM, if you wanted to show some sort of a water conservation effort, it would be a change to what we normally do, which to citizens, and that would show that we're adjusting our hours a little bit to maybe save a little more water that way, too. And then days of the week, we typically just do Monday through Saturday, but I guess if you want to, if you want me to throw something out there, I would say June 1st through August 31st, I would run 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and I would go Monday through Saturday. But it's totally whatever we're told, it's up to you guys.
I think we still need to be conservative. I mean, we're not out of the woods by any means, so it's, you know, we have to, we need to pay attention to that, plus if we're finding that we're using too much water, I think we need to even be more conservative and close it down. I mean, you told us last year how much water it takes to run that.
It'd be a thousand gallons.
So we could always address it if we, if things come up, right? We don't have to set it in stone, we can address it as a staff if we need to.
Yeah.
But we, I think we wanted some direction from council, what?
So 12 to six that you said would save, 12 to six would save the...
Ten to six.
Yeah, 10 to six, yeah, 10 to six. We're already here in the mornings anyway, so the morning time doesn't matter as much, but by closing at six instead of eight, it eliminates the need for staff.
Could we leave it open like Friday night till eight, or something like that, or is that an issue like?
Do we want to pay the staff to stay two hours late?
I'm just saying, you know, close, I don't, do it later and throw somebody a bone that they can have it at the evening with their family. What would you like to do?
I think we started, like you said, June 1st, and we go 10 to six, and then we adjust if we need to. I like that plan, I was alive there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And maybe during that July, or late July into August, we can keep a Friday night, you know, open till eight o'clock, I don't see a problem with that. If we don't make it a constant, you know, do it.
We could do later nights on the movie in the park nights, when we already have staff here.
Yeah. Okay, that would be good. Because they're already here.
Yeah. Okay, just plan Monday through Saturday?
Yeah.
And we can review this, if you have a report that we're using too much, or you feel like it's...
I can get your numbers anytime you want, but it's...
So we can readdress it at any time?
Anytime you want.
Our meeting in June, we already have eight or 10 days of information, right? Do you know is it ready to go, since it sat dormant all last year, or is it?
Ten feet, yeah. It should be ready to go, we don't anticipate any issues, it was all weathered as it should be, and should be ready to go, should be ready to go.
Should.
All right, thank you for that. Director Schindl?
Just a yearly review update for the snow plowing. Maybe, maybe, there's frost Thursday, but it seems like it's going to be too warm to actually stick on the wheels. So as we're at now, we've plowed and salted 28 times. An average year, we plow and salt seven times. Average year, we buy one contract of salt, had 150 tons on that contract. This year, we bought 582 tons of salt. Again, I cannot express, if all my guys did all winter long was plow snow, how much time and effort they put in. Mind you, they've sandbagged 5,000 sandbags for residents, we've handed out 4,000 of them. We've done major infrastructure upgrade projects this winter to help with our stormwater, the one, one major one being at the park, the other one being on 2300. There's been a few rare occasions where we've had a snowy event, some flooding, that we've had to help out with. Again, I cannot express to you guys the amount of confidence and the amount of appreciation I have for our public works members. They have given their time of nights, weekends, away from their families so much this winter. And really, I mean, myself included, just last weekend, I jumped at the mayor, and Jenny, this was the last weekend since I went on my vacation to Arizona in February, it was the first time that I didn't come back during the weekend to check things out, or have to plow, or anything. So, again, they've done an incredible job. I hope, you know, if you're on Facebook, you're following our page, and if you run into one of the public works guys, a little thank you. I mean, playing with helping you with the grant, and just showing so much support for this city has been huge. Like I said, all of my guys, they're just incredible people, and they work so hard for this city and these residents. I wish every resident could see the amount of time and dedication they show to each of them and each one of you guys. So with that being said, yeah, they have obviously exceeded everything. Again, we are having Thursday night, we're inviting public out to tie sandbags. We have about 2,000 that are field ready to be tied and stacked. So it comes four to seven o'clock on Thursday night at the public works facility, we're doing a volunteer night. We will continue to work hard and self-perform as much as we possibly can, and benefit the city the best in every way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ginny? Yes, thank you. I'd just like to piggyback off of what Director Schindl and how much commitment we've seen out of our employees this year. I'd like to give a quick update on where we are budgetary-wise. We have prepared the tentative budget, we've been working on budget, as you're well aware, since December, some of us November, some of us since last July, getting numbers and watching where the revenues and expenditures were going. We, Justin has revamped the entire public works budget, he's been watching utility fees. We do anticipate a slight increase, as was suggested by the public feedback we received last year, that they'd rather see a small improvement annually rather than a large jump. We did get numbers back from Central Weaver Sewer, anticipated increases in those fees that we are including. So we've prepared the tentative budget, which will be on your agenda in May for adoption. We are looking at a balanced budget, we've hit revenues fairly low again in anticipation, not including all this development that we're anticipating coming through at some point. So, we're fairly confident that those revenue numbers will be higher than what we're anticipating. So that being said, we have reviewed our current status on this budget, we just sent out yesterday, you should have all received in your inboxes where our March numbers came in, we're still looking at a healthy surplus for the city. It was requested last fall. We've also, I should mention, conducted a market study, and the majority of our employees are maintaining their wage. And the, there are a couple of employees that are outside that, but will be brought up to that after different probationary periods or training certifications that they'll be receiving. And we will be happy to report that our employees are within the guidelines of our market study, which has been a two-year goal for the city, to make sure that our employees are being compensated appropriately for the good work that they're doing for us. So as was discussed in the fall, we have evaluated and will continue to evaluate the budget, but we are looking at a surplus, and wanted to make you aware that we are considering compensating the employees for the hard work that they've done by the end of this fiscal year, as we cut back a little bit in the fall of what we were maybe going to offer them, we would like to reevaluate that and support them again at the end of this year.
Thank you. All right, council, it's your turn now. Council, are you all, since you have these?
No.
Yes, you do.
I do.
Yes, you do. What about your senior citizen program?
Oh, yeah, I guess I do. My wife and I, Diana, we volunteered to start up the new senior citizen program, and so we're going to run a monthly luncheon, I believe at 12 o'clock on the second Tuesday of each month. And the first one will be kind of a potluck, and so we're going to try to cite that, get that out, and get that on Facebook and get it advertised. I've already, with what was sent out in the newsletter, I've gotten several responses back from people who knew me personally, but the intention behind that is... But the intention behind that is we need to, you know, we need to rally around our senior citizens. And I think doing that, it'll be a great support for our city. So that's the intention behind it. Options are meals on wheels and we'll continue to work with them. And, but it's, it's gonna be a lot of fun. And I expect that we'll outgrow the cabin if this works the way I think it will for lunch. So my question is, is do we have room in the new building?
The public works building? We do, actually, right?
Well, try so.
As long as.
I was gonna say.
Go down, keep it big.
So I think there's a lot of activities and it's gonna be fun to see exactly what, what our seniors want to do when it gets time to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I forgot all about that. I'm sorry to pass that, I'm hoping that'll go right on.
All right, council member Weiss.
No, I just, when, when were we gonna discuss or when would you like to discuss the budget or the bonuses?
That was basically what I was indicating, where, where evaluating where we stand. We have a healthy surplus now, but it's holding pretty strong. So we'd like to, by the end of this fiscal year, do a second issuance of a bonus to the employees. Of a like nature, how about that?
Okay, so you'll have numbers down the road?
I think that's up to you guys.
I'd, I'd like to do what we did in the fall, would be my recommendation.
I'd say I'd like to include some type of let us cook for them.
Okay.
Something like that.
A what?
A luncheon in conjunction?
Again, oh yeah, I'd like to do.
That's what I'd like to do.
So we did what, and I refresh my memory in the fall?
We did, the finance director worked it to where each employee received a thousand dollar bonus. So it was above and beyond, so that after taxes, they received a thousand dollar bonus.
Well, personally, I'd like to see maybe if we could get a little bit more after everything that would go on. I mean, you could agree, you know, twenty-eight times.
They have worked and worked and worked, they've sacrificed their holidays. And I think it's a credit to the place, a lot of times we don't recognize our public, safety does that as our shift.
Agreed, yes, and.
And we, the mayor and I are trying to implement some more recognition for our, our employees that we do what the mayor does on mayor's luncheon, which we're going to increase and do more frequently for the employees next year. But they, it's always during the day. And so our nighttime shift, people don't, don't get to enjoy that benefit. And so we're talking about some other things that we can do to make sure that we're recognizing all employees for how hard they work. Yes.
So can we have, in the budget, can we save fifteen hundred dollars?
I believe we could after what we, what our numbers are looking like. I can, I can tell you for sure in May, but we've maintained the same balance the last two and a half to three months.
So then we do have.
And we did have a surplus from last year that were transferring to debt service for this year.
Well, I think that the city has done a, all the employees have done a great job this year. And I think, I think it's something that we could, if we've got it, then I think that's a number we should shoot for. Personally, that's my opinion.
So if I'm understanding correctly, you'd like us to have the finance director compensate it to each employee receives fifteen hundred?
That's my personal opinion, yes.
Any other?
Sure, go ahead, you've done a great job. No, is there anything else, any other suggestions?
I was just wondering how we're doing on the rainy day, though, because I know we dipped into it, we're getting.
We did, last year we did not, we had a surplus last year. And we are transferring that surplus to the debt service payment.
So we are going, we're, we're meeting the, the limit that we're allowed to.
Yes, we have, we've put in the amount that the state allows us, which is thirty-five percent now.
Thirty-five now?
They've upped it to thirty-five percent, I believe.
So we're holding thirty-five with everything we've got?
Yes, and we also anticipated using ARPA funds for our market study. We did not use that, we were able to balance the budget without, and that freed up the ARPA funds that we're now putting towards public works facility. When, when we made our hard decisions last year, we made the right decisions. We balanced the budget and we gave the opportunity for the city to move forward.
I think it's great if we can do that, but at the same time, I always err on the conservative side because somewhere around the line, there'll be a pipe that'll spring late. But, you know, I'm just conservative, that's all.
How about if we, you throw out a couple of numbers, we have the finance director looked at it, give you those numbers and you have an opportunity to see what you want to do next month?
I would like personally to see next month, numbers, not just the bonus, but including all the, I mean, that's fifteen hundred or a thousand take home. What's the real number? I would like to see a thousand, a thousand and fifteen hundred, yeah.
Okay. We'll have those numbers for you in May.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
The only question I have, maybe, I don't, I, I got an email from a citizen about auxiliary building setbacks. Did that ever get addressed?
Yes, we talked about that.
So the, the history on that email, that particular resident reached out to me regarding building a temporary or a covering for an RV. And our, our setbacks don't allow for those to be on the side yard of a home. If they're six feet behind the home, they can be within a foot of their property line if they don't have a metal roof. But if they're next to the home, they have to meet the same setback as the home. And he was concerned because he sees them throughout the city in other areas. And through our code enforcement process, we don't actively, proactively go out and serve notices on people that may not be in compliance. And so he was reaching out to you for considerations on reductions on setbacks. That would not be a recommendation through staff. The area in which he lives is our smallest setback at eight feet. At the R one-ten zone, so it wouldn't be a recommendation that homes are closer than that.
Okay, that's why I want to make sure he got his questions answered.
Yes, he was petitioning, that, that email came after a conversation, but he had his staff.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilor Jackson.
Just to kind of keep you an idea, as far as bonuses is concerned, and I mean, it shouldn't totally drive us, but to kind of look at what some of the other cities have done, wasn't you offered there? All, all of the full-time people got five thousand dollars and the part-time got twenty-five hundred. Just to give you an idea, I believe we are being conservative. If we do substantially less than that, which is kind of what we're shooting for. Just to give, give you an idea of what, what a city that's comparable to us did for their people.
Would you like those numbers looked at, too?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right, Councilor. Blair. All right, thank you all. The only thing I have to add is that we have the park cleanup over, what is it called? First cleanup, right? Yes, over at the park, we have the containers over there that have the green waste and the olive waste. You can't fill your garbage can. We've already used it, cleaned out my garage, thank you, Brian. Wonderful, so that's through Thursday?
Through Thursday.
All right. And, you know, since Rhodey's here, do you have a report for us at all? Usually don't call on you, but I'd appreciate it if you could.
I actually don't, and I think that's the best thing is when the lawyers don't talk much. No, I, I'll just say, I appreciate the city council and the city gears, it's been great work and so far with everyone. Our court is going really well. So far, I personally have had a great relationship with all the options that we're working with and with city staff. So we have the one lawsuit that everyone's very, very aware of. But other than that, we don't have any major issues to bring forward to the council. As far as the criminal side of things, like I said, it's, it's going very well. I feel like we're all in a room now, you know, just about everyone in their apartment, so.
Great, thank you. And what that?
I just want a question for Justin. How are we looking flood-wise? I went by North Ogden this morning and it's by the fire department's chuff.
I mean, the, the water's high.
Yeah, well, I know that, and you emptied everything and I.
We've emptied everything and our, our channels are, are holding steady. Today was a heavy runoff, so we'll probably see a better indication tomorrow. But then we're having a major cool down over the next few days. So we won't get inundated until, depending on how the Thursday storm comes in. If it, if it does snow and it's cold enough that it's snow, we'll be fine. If it comes in and it's rain or snows first and then changes over to rain, then, then we'll be on a little higher load. Like I said, we're hoping that everybody that lives on any open channel has had more than enough time to come get sandbags. I know there's been a few instances that public works has actually gone out to residents' homes that they just physically couldn't sandbag themselves and we sandbagged. There's a little place on North Hacksville Road, right on Dixon Creek that we did. Again, so we're as proactive as we can be, but we're also on standby to be reactive. All the pumps are ready to go, everything's ready to go. We're not, I haven't heard a lot this week about, about the groundwater flooding that, that has been going on. And that's just because it's actually hot enough that it's, it's being evaporated and helping moving on the pumps. So again, we'll just, we're watching every creek. I got a little video today from my friends at Bottom West Water and one of those springs up here at North Ogden, Ogden was, was rushing and kept new channels in about three different ways to get back to the creek. So it'll be an interesting year.
I'll just add some information to that. So I went to a meeting at the county today. They've been meeting to try and mitigate the floods and they wanted to include the mayors with this. So apparently on Thursday, there's going to be a, a meeting for emergency management. Are you attending that? Okay, so there's a lot of things that they're gonna be reviewing. They had charts and our year is off the chart, you know, anything that we've ever had, so. We can't forecast what's gonna happen, but they're, they say that we're in a much better position than we were back in two thousand and eleven. If you had the same amount of water as we have right now in two thousand and eleven, things would be flooded. But they've created a better channel in the rivers, they've cleaned up, they've taken out sandbars and trees and things. So it's got a better channel to go out there. They are releasing everything out of the, all the causey echo, all those up there. They're releasing them almost as fast as it's coming in, as fast as they can. There's two and a half times the amount on the mountain as in, as, as they're capable of holding. So that's a lot of water to come down. They are also releasing water out to Willard. That's a thousand cubic meters per, I don't know, something. It, it's going in at a thousand, it's exiting into the great salt lake at a thousand. So they're, they're just maintaining the flow through Willard right now. So they, they are aware of it, they said that they, that they have done everything they possibly could to get to the point where we are. They're still working forward, there's still more things to do. They did say, you know, you take care of your city first. This is what you're, you're responsible to do, excuse me. So that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna take care of our city first and then we're gonna rely on, you know, getting other resources, I guess, if we can. But I think we also are responsible for great good neighbors. And if we're in a good position and other people aren't, if we can reach out, we're gonna do that, too. So, well, I'll look forward to hearing back from the emergency management meeting on Thursday and see if we need to take any more steps. But I think Justin took Jenny and I out the last, I don't know what, two weeks ago and it was so stormy and Dixon Creek was overflowing and, or what is that? Dixon Creek was overflowing. Anyway, there was a lot of water even then and it has calmed down, but it could happen within a day or two. So, yeah, there, it's, it's, everyone's talking about it, it's on people's minds, that we can actually do something about it, so. I don't know if that's helped or not. It was just a lot of numbers thrown out there today. I know that one of them was like Ben Lomond trailed it, it was that three hundred and five percent on there. Then I think the mountain has two hundred and ninety-six percent or something, two hundred and ninety-four, somewhere. Just no, just crazy, crazy numbers, we haven't seen that, so. Anyway, no more discussion, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
What, what about City incorporation anniversary?
You bet, I thought no, all the way around. Happy birthday to the city. Is, it was the anniversary of incorporation, April ninth. Do you have anything to say about that?
Sixty-one years since the city has been incorporated, so just a reminder of our incorporation date that just passed.
I think it was in this, and I should look back, because I looked at this once, I think it was a township in sixty-two and then, and then in sixty-four, it was a city, is that right?
Our incorporation documents say sixty-two.
Okay, so I think in that, somewhere in that book or something, maybe we need to go back and look at that. Because I think I've got some information from that, a history book. So, anyway, happy birthday to the city, that's what.
There we go.
Shall I try the searching? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.